Martha said y'all gonna be out.
So these are the arts people who.
I didn't see.
I guess so.
I was coming.
I don't think we should be in this business myself. I don't think we should be in it.
Yeah, we're gonna get this changed, Martha. We're gonna get this changed. We've got to turn it over. I mean, a lot.
Lawrence, you know I got your.
Yes, okay.
But I am telling you, my husband would like one of these.
Absolutely.
I use it all the time.
It's great. It really is. I was grocery shopping.
You have to remember.
Have on this. Yeah, I should have. I didn't have that much. We didn't have. You know, I didn't. I started the fundraising really late, I remember. I didn't. I didn't know I had an opponent until February fifth.
Where is he? He's not there. He does not show up.
He's been. He was down at D O P and actually, I think they're using their. Oh, no. Of course not.
I have not seen you.
Oh.
We did look for a second.
Okay.
I can see you. You have a light there. Do you check all the way?
Yeah.
I think those. Telephone lens. They're just. One more thing. Again, they're with my issue. My shot. I'm a professional photographer for diversity baseball team.
Right. The, um.
Okay.
You know, wasn't changed.
Okay.
The ones with you and Melissa. It's really wonderful.
That's why you're telling me.
Don't be. I hear you. You can. He can help you.
No, it's fine. It's fine.
It's all good.
You ready, Rodney?
City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Autumn Grover.
Here.
Autumn. Autumn Rainey.
Here.
Autumn Burris. Autumn Fisk.
Here.
Autumn Braithwaite.
Here.
Autumn Nguyen.
Here.
Autumn Wilson.
Here.
Autumn Holmes.
Here.
Autumn Tindham.
Yes.
Miss eight zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, March eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements, and I would like to talk about hamburgers. Would Mr. Eddie Lakin please come up? All right, I have to do this on. All right, I guess I have to do it here. Oh, I can. Okay, good. All right, we'll try this.
I'm eating.
Testing. Doesn't seem to be doing much.
Yeah, it is.
It is?
Yep.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Lakin. It says here, simply awesome, top-of-the-line burgers with tons of options for customization, plus a fantastic selection of imaginative, to-die-for fries. And transcendent, thick malts in terrific flavors earn wows at this counter service Evanston Joint. I'm not sure joint is.
Yeah, no, I like joint.
Is joint okay? Joint's good.
I was striving for joint.
So even with nonexistent decor?
Sure.
Short. Short hours.
I just used the tables and chairs that were already in the restaurant. And we bought it.
Short hours till four P M. and crazy long lines. It's still really hard to complain. This is the City of Evanston Award for Excellence, presented to the Edzo's Burger Shop in honor of Zagat's surveys, February two thousand and thirteen, recognition of Edzo's Burger Shop as one of the best burger shops in twenty-five cities throughout the United States.
The Zagat guide is all customer reviews, so, you know, we're honored to be in Evanston, which is such a supportive community for independent small businesses and have such a great customer base. So the customers write the reviews, and the customers got the award for me, and you guys are the customers. So thank you, Evanston, very much.
Congratulations.
Thanks, Eddie.
That, I believe, concludes the mayor's. Oh, no, I have one more public announcement. I know that's what you came for. I would like to remind the council that I would love to have any recommendations from you for the A D A Board. Okay, well, if you have one, give it to me. That'd make me happy. Thank you. City manager, do you have announcements?
I do not.
City clerk. Clerk, do you have announcements?
Oh, yes, I do, Madam. Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. Just want to remind everyone that next Monday, starting at nine A M. in the morning in room twenty-two hundred, there'll be early voting through April sixth, and Easter Sunday is, has now been taken off. So you do not have to vote on Easter Sunday. Also, for, um, we'll be here from nine to five, Monday through Saturday, and nine to three. I mean, yeah, nine to three on Sundays, excluding Easter Sunday. Also, Cook County Clerk David Orr would like for all candidates who are running to submit a small description of them and their name in less, four hundred words less, to then email that to Colleen Gleason at cookcountyil.gov so that the constituents can look at and see who you are and what you're running for. And for all you write-ins, there are two ways that you can write in for a write-in candidate. You can do it by touchscreen. There'll be a little box on the screen. You touch the box, and then bring up a keyboard. You type in a person's name, and that should get your writing candidate that way. Or you do paper, and you can just write it on the line. They are now saying that spelling is not. Is not determined to be very accurate. So if you spell a name wrong, it's up to the judges to decide if the intent of the writer was writing the right name. So, and that's something new to me, but they don't consider your spelling as an essential part of, for writing. That is all.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next item is citizen comment. I'm going to call people up for at a time. We really appreciate that you're here to make comments, and that's very helpful to all of us. If you could limit your comments to three minutes, though, that would move the meeting along and is required by our rules. So the first four speakers are June Adrisky, Peggy Tar, Dino Robinson, and Jeannie Sankey, one forty Clyde.
Okay, I'm gonna speak on an item of the Peckish one tonight.
Could you give your name and address? Thank you.
I'm gonna speak on the Peckish one tonight. My issue isn't the project itself. The issue here is what I see in these documents that don't add up. And I sent city council members an email on this to try to outline it so people would understand. Quite simply, the financing is five hundred thousand dollars. The construction cost shown here in this, the estimate, is five hundred and forty-four thousand. That does not add up. And then, at the same time, there's a thing called project startup costs, where leasehold improvements are three hundred and twenty-nine thousand. And that doesn't add. You take that away from the five hundred thousand financing, you're short. You're basically gonna be short two hundred thousand at minimum. But I think if you start to add in a lot of other things, this project is short a lot of money. The question, though, that I have is, I'm not opposed. If the council wants to go ahead and approve this project, the council can go ahead and approve the project because the legal documents here clearly state the owner's responsible to come up with the additional funding or basically drop out of the project. So the city's protected, but I think passing something like this with, what I see in here in the documentation is not really in the public interest or anyone's interest. I mean, we need to have correct numbers. We need to have things that make sense. And if the city has another way to explain this, that's fine, but, so, I mean, go ahead and pass it tonight if you'd like. But I think you need to basically modify whatever ordinance you create to make it pretty clear the city isn't gonna provide any additional funding for this, and the two hundred thousand is it. And this project does appear short. So council members need to either understand this or figure this out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Tar, actually officially Margaret Tar. I live at nine oh seven Sherman Avenue. At the March eleventh city council meeting, I pointed out that college students, senior citizens, African-Americans, Latinos, foreigners, low-income and mentally fragile populations occupy the apartment in the nine hundred block of Sherman near Main Street. I also stated that some of these apartments are located above the proposed space for the boxing studio at seven thirty-nine Main Street, while others in my complex are located within thirty-seven feet of the back door of the proposed boxing studio. Residents in this area don't believe the city will do anything about any noise disturbances that may arise from the boxing studio. Excuse me. Since in spite of complaints, the city of Evanston has not stopped the noise disturbances from Revolution Spin, a stationary bike exercise business located at nine oh four dash nine oh six Sherman. Residents, I included, feel that the city doesn't consider the population in this area to be important. In March fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen, Evanston Review article on Revolution Spin states, quote, "If you're walking down Sherman Avenue on a Sunday morning, you can hear Jason Bressler shouting out cues and words of motivation to his class from inside his Evanston Spin studio, Revolution Spin," end of quote. Mr. Bressler is the owner of Revolution Spin, but he is not the only Revolution Spin instructor that can be heard on the street and across the street in apartments with windows closed. The noise is even worse when Revolution Spin opens its doors. And I know there are some ordinances in the city about noise on the street. None of the city council members live in this area that I've referred to, which would make the enthusiasm shown by members of the council for the boxing studio irrelevant if it weren't for the fact that the boxing studio will fill another empty storefront. The question remains. Why is the city not steering new businesses to the Dempster Dodge Mall, which is located away from residences, has ample parking, and is supposedly in need of businesses? The zoning board of appeals approved operation of the boxing studio from six A M. to nine P M. with stipulations that, quote, "No amplified command or instruction may be given, and the applicant must mitigate sound and its impact from traveling out of the unit." According to employees in adjacent business, the proposed space for the boxing studio is not yet soundproofed. In response to my F O I. inquiry about noise allowed at Revolution Spin, I received an October eighth, two thousand and twelve, letter from Mr. Stephen O'Sullivan, City of Evanston Administrator of adjudication department, that states, quote, "There is no description of produced noise allowed during activity at this establishment," end of quote. Several people told me that they knew stationary bike studios were noisy. Why didn't the city know this and require stipulations for Revolution Spin to mitigate noise? Also asked was, why does the city include stipulations about mitigating noise for the proposed boxing studio that will be owned by a Latino, but not for Revolution Spin? That is owned by a Caucasian. Are there double standards? I want to just emphasize, the fact that I brought the question of double standards to you does not mean that I'm in favor of the boxing studio in that location because I'm not.
Peggy, I do need you to wrap up. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Morris Robinson, Jr. Most people know me as Dino Robinson. And I'm here tonight in support of what you'll be hearing later on tonight, this evening, Evanstarts, and the committee and the, those who are involved in the project and the wonderful work that they've been pushing with this survey. Initially, I think there were about five different arranged seminars in various locations in Evanston. And what I have to applaud this group in doing is that they immediately identified that there wasn't enough diversity, not enough opinions with this group. And so they went on and above and beyond their work and held multiple additional surveys and venues to get community feedback. So I'm here to support Evanstarts. I'm here to say that this group that did a tremendous amount of work on this project should be commended, and I think you're in for a real treat tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeannie Zanka. I am an Eighth Ward resident. I live at one forty Clyde. And I'm here to speak on the Peckish LLC ordinance that you'll be acting on tonight. As someone who lives in the Eighth Ward and who lived in the Third and Fourth Wards prior to buying my home in the Eighth, like many Evanstonians, I always took for granted the vibrant business community within very short walk of my home. And when I moved to the Eighth Ward, I used to joke that if we only had a lucky platter on Howard Street, everything would be perfect. I wanted to thank you for what you have done for our neighborhood in supporting the revitalization along Howard Street. It has gone from a commercial district that had very little to offer the diversity of its residents to being a place that is now a destination. We have the coolest neighborhood bar in the world on our street. And what's even better is, none of us feel outcooled when we go to our neighborhood bar that is the coolest bar in the world. When Peckish opens, and I trust, I truly trust you will approve this ordinance tonight, you will do so much more to revitalize this part of town. We are thrilled that we can go over and eat at Ethiopian Diamond or the Hop House, but we know our tax dollars are going across the street to Chicago. We'd rather have them at home. When these businesses come in and change the scope of Howard Street, it improves our quality of life exponentially. We had a great neighborhood to begin with. Please understand, we're a strong community. We are not a dangerous place. We are probably the most diverse group you will ever meet. And now, like other Evanston neighborhoods, we can walk around the corner and get a cup of coffee. We can get really great Haitian pate. We have a cool bar. We look forward to this restaurant, and I want you to know, in case the question comes up for anyone, no one in the neighborhood, I feel, I feel confident speaking on behalf of my neighbors, has any fear about any noise or traffic complaints. Parking's already tight, like in most neighborhoods. But the fact that in a courtyard on Callan next to Howard, we have replaced barking, snarling junkyard dogs with an outdoor patio and appropriate music at an appropriate level thrills us. Having lived in the Fourth Ward prior, I know Debbie's work personally from years back at Tommy Nevens. We're looking forward to inviting all of you to what is a wonderful, rich Evanston neighborhood to eat with us. Thank you again for your support of our business community and our neighborhood, and we look forward to you approving the ordinance.
Thank you. Next is Jamie Evans, Saul Lieberman, Sharon Eckerstall, and Steve Levon.
Jamie Evans, ten twenty-eight Ashland. We presented before, as you know, I'm from Peckish One LLC. The, that was a tough speech to follow. Thank you very much. What do I need to say? But I just want to say thank you again. We're very excited about this opportunity. We're a hundred and ten percent committed to the neighborhood and the community in the area, and we really think it will work. And thanks. Thank you for the opportunity. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Saul Lieberman, eighteen sixteen Brummel Street. I'm here to talk to you all tonight about Section Seven, Special Order of Business, Evanstarts' report. Dear Madam Mayor and council members, tonight is about optimism and opportunity. It's about everyone in this room, you and me. It's about our city, our future. It's about today, yes, but Evanston needs to burn bright for another hundred and fifty years. The work of the Evanstarts Committee has provided that roadmap. Through this inclusive process pursued wholeheartedly by Mina Dickerson, Judy Kemp, Ann Berkeley, and Amanda Carlson, and many others, key areas focused on and keep in our sights have been identified. As a parent, I found the listening sessions to be inclusive and thought-provoking. As an artist, I found the conversations and the whole endeavor stimulating and exciting. Parents throughout Evanston are rallying to enhance our public schools, art, education, and we support the work of this committee. The stars are aligning in favor of the arts, and the citizens of Evanston will benefit from the Evanstarts efforts. Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sharon Eckerstall, twenty-five nineteen Ashland. My concern to you tonight is regarding the tax exemptions that will be affecting us in northern Cook County next year. This year in Chicago, they will be losing their seven percent homeowner exemption because the values of the houses went up so quickly that the county gave them a seven percent, only for so long. So next year, Chicago will be losing it, or this year. Next year, Evanston will. And they have instituted a new exemption called the Sunset Relief Exemption. And I don't know if any of you have heard of it. I've had close to forty-five classes to be a certified Illinois assessing officer since nineteen ninety-eight. So I keep continuing to go to school, fulfilling all my requirements, and help people throughout the county. And this is one thing that concerns me. In order to be able to apply for this in Evanston next year, you're gonna have to be making under thirty thousand dollars a year and have never had the senior exemption. So it's gonna cut out a lot of people in certain wards who are very low income, and that concerns me. So I really instill upon you to get in and file an appeal on your assessed value for this year because it will help you next year when this affects our part of the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steve Levon. I live at seventeen thirty-eight Chicago Avenue. I'd like to add to what others have said previously, not tonight, but about the Evanston Climate Action Plan. I'm very proud to be a citizen of a place that has a climate action plan. Not just waiting for Washington and Springfield to figure it out. We're doing something here. When we do, we can make an incremental change individually. When we turn down our thermostat or turn off a light or buy an electric car even, just a pretty small change. But what the city council did last year was a pretty big change by, when we aggregated the electricity for the whole city and did it a hundred percent renewable. And I'm very pleased. I applaud the valuable work you did last year and I remind you, that did meet, as I understand it, met the Climate Action Plan goal for the year. So I'm just encouraging you to continue with that this year, take another step. Keep it a hundred percent renewable and also set aside some funds for local renewable energy, like solar panels and things. I understand as a possibility, we could also, you know, add a little to it that would set aside a fund for those kind of projects. So thanks again for your good work.
Thank you. Padma Rayo's next, and then BK Rayo.
Padma Rao, two two four six Sherman. My comments were approved by my attorney. I submit that your public record shows that this council seems totally intolerant of minority views, especially from those with darker skin. Obey the Constitution and stop violating taxpayers' First Amendment right to petition for redress. Obey your own rule and keep quiet during citizen comment without interrupting, retorting, or intimidating taxpayers. Stop trying to force us into closed-door dealings with you. I submit that even a so-called inactive lawyer should know that no means no and that a public official cannot lawfully goad others to intimidate a minority or vote to take away a minority's constitutional free speech rights. I submit that you show no respect for taxpayers' rights and money. Stop wasting tax dollars on your pet projects and personal vendettas. Your Eighth Ward member's wine and cheese bar involves taxpayers' funds. Your Eighth Ward member memorialized her animus against Viola in your public record, which Viola cited in its lawsuit against the city. The complaint in the Davies case describes your Eighth Ward member's role leading to that federal lawsuit against the city. Stop antagonizing taxpayers and pay for the lawsuits yourself, not with our tax dollars. I submit that taxpayers would rather invest in youth programs, job training, and helping our neighbors keep their homes and feed their families instead of paying the price for your foolish words and deeds. Your own city code requires tree protection and traffic safety, but your mayor tries to silence us and force her agents whitewash when we ask you to obey your own city code. We object to your vote at Kendall to sentence over two dozen mature trees to death for no reason and to endanger pedestrians with an alley that dumps traffic onto the narrowest street. Your record includes the Kendall Developers Lawyer's letter stating that Holland and Knight was hired to sue the city. Your record. Your records show that you paid Holland and Knight tens of thousands of tax dollars to represent the city. Illinois Supreme Court rules of professional conduct forbid a law firm from representing against its current or former client. Your record shows that your 1st Ward member's son works for Holland and Knight. The Evanston Patch reported that your 1st Ward member was overheard telling the developers' lawyer that your vote would go through no matter what taxpayers say. You voted without discussing taxpayers' concerns or the city code's requirements for tree protection and traffic safety. In Nevada Commission on Ethics v. Carrigan, the U.S. Supreme Court held that when a council member's campaign manager was a consultant on a project, that council member was forbidden from both pushing and voting on the matter. I submit that your 1st Ward member's push and vote for the Kendall project when her son's law firm was hired by the developer is likewise illegal. Obey the law, stop violating taxpayers' rights and wasting taxpayers' money. Protect the trees and pedestrians at Kendall. Protect the Kendall trees.
Thank you.
Can you adjust it? My comments were approved by my attorney. Here are examples of how you pass ordinances. I submit that your chicken ordinance shows your utter indifference to taxpayers. You introduced too many controversial issues that day, with the result that too many people had to divide the time for citizen comment. After stating their name and address, taxpayers did have, did not have time to say much else. You gave chickens a pass. I submit that your rental licensing ordinance shocked landlords, homeowners, and other taxpayers with its draconian rules. One taxpayer properly asked, "Are you insane?" I submit that no sane person would think of such rules. I submit that your failed attempt to usurp the township is another example of overreaching your authority. Many laws were cited that your actions are not legal. You went ahead and rammed through your so-called advisory referendum. You divided Evanstonians into two groups, those who follow the law and those who follow you. I submit that your actions are a total waste of tax dollars and create a tarnished image for the city as uncaring for its needy. I submit that wasting taxpayers' money appears to be one so-called accomplishment of your 8th Ward woman. I submit that Ward 8, a wine and cheese bar involving tax funds, is one example of her wasteful spending. Her open expression of hostility against Viola is recorded in the city's ANPW video. Her mistreatment of Ms. Davies is cited in the federal lawsuit in Davies versus City of Evanston. I submit that litigation is expensive for taxpayers, but that controlling one's mouth is easier. I submit that the council has a duty to control her if she cannot control herself. Finally, I submit that your position in the Kendall issue is bizarre. You voted to kill over 24 trees. The Evanston Patch reported that your vote would go through regardless of taxpayers' concerns. You approved a dangerous alley that could be a legal liability to the city. You ignored double representation by Holland and Knight where your 1st Ward member's son works. I submit that it would be a lot easier to leave the Kendall trees alone. You claim Evanston is a tree city, USA. Stop tarnishing its image. Save the trees, and I shall return.
Thank you. That concludes citizen comment. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
What about the special order?
Oh, yeah, there are a few people waiting for that. City Manager, could we have the special order of business?
May I, Mayor Members of the Council, good evening. We are here this evening to hear the report of the Evan Starts Initiative. As you know, the city, the Evanston Community Foundation, the Arts Council have been working over the last several months on a roadmap for the arts, and we're pleased that we're here this evening. Judy Kemp has been chairing the group that has been working on this, and I believe she has introductory comments.
Good evening, I'm Judy Kemp, the Chair of Evan Starts. Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, the City Manager, I want to thank you for taking the time to hear this presentation, the result of six months of exhausting work, but very exciting work. Excuse me. Evan Starts is a true collaboration. It's not only the coming together of the three organizations that Wally just mentioned, the City of Evanston, the Evanston Community Foundation, and the Evanston Arts Council, but it is also the joining of citizens, artists, and arts groups of Evanston, 1% of the population. Evanstonians who care about the arts stood up to voice their aspirations for our community, and what they said was clear. They gave their ideas with hope and intention that action would happen. You'll be impressed by not only the sincerity and passion demonstrated, but also by the clear message that this is the beginning of real movement. I would like to thank, first of all, the members of the Working Group who worked so diligently to make this endeavor happen. Sarah Shostak, Joan Gunsberg, and Judy Aiello from the Community Foundation, Ann Berkeley and Heidi Bloom from the Evanston Arts Council, Jeff Corey and Johanna Niden from the City of Evanston, and Amanda Carlson who assisted our consultant, Amina Dickerson. How did this process begin? There were several trends that converged in early of 2012. The National Endowment for the Arts awarded the city a grant to explore a potential arts district in downtown. The parents of District 65 students were exploring efforts to strengthen the arts in the school. There were organizations and questions discussed about the fate of city-owned buildings and space for the arts, both at Nois, at the Evanston Arts Center, and on Howard Street. And the city reached out to the Community Foundation to engage leaders in the Evanston Arts Council to together explore residents' perspectives on the arts. The report you're about to see today, we convened ourselves into creating Evan Starts, creating our cultural vision. The report today precedes a submission of a final report, a much more substantive, much longer document with ample appendices of our research, summaries of our survey data, and additional detail on the recommendations that you're going to hear today. They'll be posted after final editing after this meeting. But tonight, I want to talk about our mission. Our charge was to create community engagement process that would generate a vision and roadmap for the arts for the Evanston community. So this raised several questions. First of all, what do residents want from the arts? The city named six target business sectors that could drive economic development in Evanston. How are we going to move forward? What did the Revistons think? What were their aspirations for making this, the arts accessible to our community, and what can the arts contribute to Evanston's future? In doing this, we began a public engagement process, and in that process, over 750 people, 1% of Evanston's population, responded, either through the open public listening sessions we held, through the sector focus groups we conducted, through individual one-on-one stakeholder interviews, and through an online survey. We spent about 275 hours amongst the members of the Working Group, in addition to the time that our consultants spent working on collecting the research and talking and putting together this report. I just would wonder, how many, all those who were involved in this process in one way or another, by coming to a meeting, coming to, just raise your hands, just so I get an idea of how many people were involved. That's awesome. That's just absolutely incredible. It has been a wonderful and open process. In fact, respondents from every ward participated in this process, and we are happy to report that it was an inclusive and broad process. So now, I think you want to learn what we learned. So I'm going to step down, and I'm going to turn the microphone over to our consultant, Amina Dickerson. And I want to specially thank Amina because she went above and beyond her commitment to Evan Starts, to this report, and to the Evanston community, and to the arts as an essential element of a thriving society. So I turn it over to Amina. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judy. Good evening. I'm delighted to finally get to this moment, that we can share what we've heard and what we've learned. And I think it starts by the recognition that the arts are already an important component of Evanston's economy, of Evanston's quality of life. And what we heard is that the pieces just need to be organized and addressed and promoted comprehensively to benefit the city. So Evanston has, to begin, many assets. I think that was the first thing that we heard, to the surprise even of people in the listening groups. There are more than 85 arts and cultural organizations in Evanston. In fact, Evanston has 10 times more artists and residents who are employed in arts-related work sectors than what is the national average. There's a sizable visual arts community. You've got a great array of theaters. You've got wonderful museums, from the block at Northwestern to the Evanston Historical Society, and of course, the Mitchell Museum. You're rich in all kinds of musical genres, blues, jazz, gospel, you know, choral work, classical work. You've got the Evanston Symphony and the light works, light opera works. Training in Evanston is also very abundant, everything from the Music Institute of Chicago, it should be the Music Institute of Evanston, but it is world-renowned, as well as the Actors Gymnasium, which has done tremendous work in training theater artists not only in Evanston, but again, throughout the region. Evanston also has a very strong tradition of nurturing arts development. YEA has been active in this community for over 25 years. This is one of four cities that was identified and selected by the Arts Alliance of Illinois for a pilot project, Arts at the Core, for the elementary schools. You've got rich traditions in jewelry and quilt-making and ceramics, as well as what we would call the informal arts, praise dancing in church, gospel choirs, and ethnic dance ensembles. You've got an incubator. People were talking about Demster Dodge. Well, you have an incubator that is already actively cultivating dance there. Arts, in fact, contribute to the city's economy, and I think this is an important point to make. A sample of only 47 of Evanston's 85 arts nonprofits demonstrated, this is based on a formula from the Cultural Data Project, a national data project, nearly 20 million in household income to residents, supporting 683 full-time equivalent jobs, and delivering 2.64 million in state and government revenue. This is a calculation, as I said, that is broadly published, and with the assistance of Arts Alliance Illinois, we were able to include it here. I thought, sort of, even more interesting is the fact that this is a small piece of the pie. When we look at audience spending in Illinois, that's $1.19 billion. And when we think about what makes a creative and dynamic urban community, Richard Florida and others have written about this, successful urban communities are places with imaginative and artistic citizens. Certainly, again, something that speaks so well of Evanston. If we look at that, what's the piece of the pie that we should be generating for Evanston? I look at just the 452 million in meals that is spent statewide, and I think about the extraordinary reputation of Evanston's hamburgers, and it's fine dining as well, and thinking about what happens if that partnership is stimulated even more. So, that's the good news. The more unfortunate news is that despite the economic contributions that Evanston's arts community makes, that there's still much more to come. Evanston's arts organizations are struggling to maintain operations. You've got more than 14 of those 85 organizations with budgets under $100,000. Many of the artists work unpaid, the leaders of these organizations, their dedication is such that they will give the time and do not generate a paycheck from that. The funds to build capacity in such key areas as development, that is fundraising, promotion and marketing, which we heard so often, are underdeveloped because of the lack of investment in those areas. So we started to talk to the artists about what their needs were, and the online survey demonstrated that, of course, artists are keenly aware of what they would like to have and what they do not have. Facilities came up top of the list, followed closely behind that by promotion and marketing. Again, no surprise, we heard that quite a bit. And conversations and connections with the business community was something that they wanted. They wanted advocacy from the city. Can you just talk about the fact that we have artists here, that we have this rich ecology, this ecosystem of the arts? So the needs were very clear. Facilities came up over and over again, not just the downtown cultural district, but arts spaces in communities and some of the other commercial districts. Funding, and how do we stimulate more creative systems of financing for the arts? Collaboration with businesses, as I've said, it's not just that we want, and certainly the businesses in Evanston have done a terrific job of offering coupons and discounts and working in collaboration, but there are technical skills, there are resources, there are management skills that could also be of benefit to the arts community. Branding, marketing, promotion, you're going to hear that over and over and over again. Zoning and permitting, can we think about ways to relax that, to look at some of the structures that we have that can create the opportunity for artists' live-work space, or perhaps for buskers, for example, performers who could work downtown or in the metro areas? Arts education and arts training, again, it's gotten better, and the parents have really worked to make sure that that's a priority, but what more could happen? Artist housing, I've mentioned, and technical support and capacity building is something that we heard. In terms of facilities in the downtown arts district, there were fervent calls for an attractive, flexible, cultural facility downtown. That would be an anchor, people felt. And in fact, 93% of the survey respondents said, "If they build it, I will come. I will support it through my attendance." And we know from not only the experience here, but what we've seen around the country. There are more than 600 communities nationwide that have used the arts as an anchor, that when you get that cultural district, arts organization, tourism, and related commercial activity seems to be spurred on. Space in the neighborhoods, artist housing and studios, again, you're hearing some things repeat themselves. Resources for training, production, and classes, and neighborhood venues that can also draw audiences to outlined districts. In terms of the funding, budgets are small. We know that, as I said, over 14 of those organizations, under $100,000 annually. Lack of donor funding, and a lot of that comes from cultivation. You have to have the tools to ask for the money, and if you can't get the letter out or you don't have the online campaign, it's very hard to generate that. And while the Community Foundation has been giving very vital support for capacity building, they are unable to fulfill the full volume of the requests that they get on an annual basis. Evanston, unfortunately, at this point, has limited corporate and foundations that arts organizations can appeal to for funding. So, what do we have? We have a larger-than-average percentage of artists, many of them working unpaid, and a lower-than-average percentage of city funding and other funding. The erosion of already minimal budgets has been felt by all of these groups. Greater financial stability is, in essence, vital to the growth of this sector. So, what, you know, we had, in the survey, like 30 pages of verbatim comments and recommendations. We're not going to put all of that in the report, just some of the highlights, but they said it to us and we thought we needed to repeat it. It's time to end the talk and take action. So, this is the vision. How do we move into action? How do we create that roadmap for progress? Well, the first thing they said is, get the right people, right positions, and right structure to advance the arts. And so, central plan, linked to the city plan, not in addition to, but as part of the city plan, but to do that, you also need inspired leadership and a coordinated infrastructure. Public-private partnership matched by resources, a coherent brand, an arts brand for Evanston, actively promoted, not just by the city, but by the businesses, by the retail industry, by the arts organizations, one message, and then arts education opportunities, because we're talking about creating this not just for today, but for tomorrow as well. We had a vision then, what is the what that we're going after? After hearing all this, we've crafted a vision for Evanston. Evanston is invested in fostering a dynamic, accessible, and culturally-rich arts community. Creativity flourishes in a welcoming, collaborative environment that encourages lifelong participation in the arts by residents and visitors alike. So that's the what. If you don't know where you're going, all roads lead you there. This is, again, trying to galvanize all of us around one message. The arts ecosystem is the The arts ecosystem is the who. Who is a part of this? This is not just about the arts organizations, but, and I'm sorry if it's small, but there's so many parts to this ecosystem that need to be cultivated in unison. So everything from the funders and state and local government, to Northwestern University, District 65, the theater community, patrons, volunteers, all of that is part of who needs to come together to make this work. So, now is the what, okay? Yes, okay. She's giving me my time. I'm trying to, I'm almost done. Priority one, city action, okay? Create a new cabinet-level position to focus on the art sector and economic development. There's a lot of sentiment of support for this idea, helping to convene community leaders and stakeholders, collaborating with them, and forging the civic leadership that advances next phases of planning and development. It calls for a skilled, knowledgeable, and charismatic leader who's capable of really galvanizing these sectors and getting them in effective coalition to work together. And the position must also work internally in the city, to look at where is the alignment to effectively coordinate pro-artz efforts, you know, just thinking about the permitting and the zoning. That's one of the things that this position would help to coordinate. So it's not all on the city. There's community action that also has to happen, and so, this community needs to come together as community organizations and stakeholders to work with the city to drive research, planning, and implementation of that cultural vision. In consultation with all of these leaders, appoint a committee of high-level representatives who will drive that process. They will, together with the city, seek initial funding from multiple sources to create the first two to three years of budgets for planning and moving these new initiatives forward, and ensure that there's a proper level of services and facilities to support arts development, again, in consultation with the city role. So, the second bullet here, the second priority, city has its role, community has its role, and then there's joint action. Creating a comprehensive plan for cultural development that is aligned with and integrated into Evanston's goals. And I just, again, would say, it's not a separate plan, it is a plan within the city plan. Conduct extensive research on national models, our report will point you to those, of civic arts management structures, arts district structures, and related funding mechanisms for the scale and size of Evanston. This is a precursor to the real planning that has to happen. Do a gap analysis. What is unique about Evanston with all of this ecology of arts organizations that gives it the opportunity to really create a special niche or unique services that will create Evanston as a hub to the North Shore in terms of the arts, and draw those folks from Chicago to come across the border and spend time and energy and money here? Determine the first steps to how to connect the arts ecosystem with all of those parts together. You know, one of the things we heard is that the visual artists don't talk to the theater artists, they don't know how to connect with business, they don't know exactly who in government, so it's a lot of work that needs to be done to pull that all together. Here are the top-line recommendations. Explore creative use of space that includes not only the cultural district downtown, but in the neighborhoods. Accelerate the efforts to identify and grow financial support and resources, and again, this is not all on the city, but the city's got to work with us to find the mechanisms for that funding and support. Build a coherent identity as an art city. Nurture artist practice. You've got wonderful artists here. The thing we heard is that the quality is okay, but it could be better. You know, so how do we make better best? That's the issue. Strengthen partnership with the key collaborator. Northwestern came up over and over again, as someone, as an entity, someone, as an entity that provides a great deal, could do other things, and it's not just, again, about finances. In addition to that, what can Evanston do to better serve some of their interests and some of their growth? Reposition arts as integral to K-12 education, again, building on the movement that we've already heard from. Establish a seamless arc of experiences over a lifetime. Evanston is such a wonderful community. I say that as someone who came here as a visitor and has learned to really love this place over the last six and a half months. And for young people to your senior citizens, there should be opportunities that are readily available to them, and they're knowledgeable about how to get there. When does it happen? Where is it going on? How much will it cost? That's the arc of the experience that we've been talking about. Just a couple more slides, and I just want to notice, note that each one of these has multiple sub-bullets in the report that you got as an executive summary that's online and will be in the final report. Some indicators of progress. These are all integrated ideas that should be represented in the plan. Move forward with the capital planning, look at the zoning and permitting, update cultural assets. It was really interesting that we could not find a single source that had a real repository of how many arts organizations are here. We got that from the state. We didn't get that from Evanston, okay? So, that, and then the census of artists, who's working in what disciplines. Really having that at our fingertips gives us a power to really make the kinds of plans and find the kinds of funding that we need. And then finally, an essential, I call it, an awareness generator. That might be a kiosk and something online and something in print that is the definitive source of information about what's going on, when, where, and how in the arts. And that's something, again, you've got a lot going on, but as you build this ecosystem, as you build the arts, that's going to be really critical. So some immediate next steps from tonight, we'd love for the council to adopt the vision and to incorporate it into the city's plan. That will send a real message that you did hear, that there is a momentum and an opportunity here. And then allocate funding to support the next phase of development. We were the plan-to-plan, now we got to do the plan. And that, it starts with convening some of the existing arts initiatives together to align the top-line priorities for a unified planning process, getting that committee appointed, and creating the mechanism for the research on funding and for models of cultural management. I'm at the end. So the residents advocate for action, and I just leave you with this marvelous quote from one of your residents. "The most important ingredient is a conviction, passed on from generation to generation and seriously encouraged by school and public example, that the arts are as important as more easily quantifiable aspects of life." So, that is Evan Starts, and we're just getting started. Thank you so much for your attention, and we're happy to take any questions. We're happy to entertain any questions or comments. Observations? Praise is always welcome.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I think thanks are due multiple times to everyone who was involved in this, Ms. Dickerson, Judy Kemp, your colleague Amanda, the Evanston Community Foundation, the Arts Council, thank you, Ms. Berkeley. So, I participated in a couple of, I think, a couple of the listening session and maybe one of the reports back, and all I can say is there was great energy in the room, lots of good ideas. I think this is something that's gotten a lot of traction, not just because of this Evan Starts effort, but because of the NEA grant, because we're really working on bringing arts locations, venues to Evanston. And so, one of my questions is, and it kind of came out in some of our discussions, is that this is going to require a leader, it's going to require the city to play more of a role than just convener in this. How do we take that first next step? That is, though, that was the question in so many of those gatherings, is what is our next step? What is the first step? This is the first step. What's the second step?
Well, I think the second step is really bringing the leadership of all of these initiatives together, so that they can be aligned. One of the things that we heard is that they're splintered efforts, people are operating silos, so that needs to happen. And then within the city, we really are anxious to have someone appointed at a senior level who really has the wherewithal to convene internally what needs to happen from the city and to work with this external group. I think out of the external group, there will probably be leadership that will be not only necessary, but will emerge. But once people get aligned behind what it is that we're marching for, what comes first, what comes second, it will be easier to identify who that public side of that equation will be.
And so, part of that, my question would be then, is this, do we, not wanting to avoid the silos again as to how we talk about the arts, because we're doing arts, it's economic development, it is recreation, where do we imagine this person operating within the city, so that they are working across silos, so that they're not just pigeonholed as an arts person? It's bigger than just arts. And then, my other concern is about the funding. It seems to me that we really do need some kind of dedicated fund in the arts that's not focused on one part of the arts or one entity or one organization, but rather generates the larger interest and support for the arts in Evanston, and where the money flows is part of that.
Yeah, I think there was, there was clear consensus amongst people who responded to the survey and in the focus groups and listening sessions for a united fund for the arts. I can't remember the exact statistic, but it was something like 74% said that if there were a fund for the arts, they would contribute on an annual basis. That's a really good number. And I think there is a feeling that that would, that that would work. I think that we, as a collaborative group of people, would stay in effect, we would stay working as Evan Starts to try and help facilitate this process, to help work with the city manager and whomever he appoints to this cabinet-level position that would work within the city, and that we would work with them to bring all the organizations together. I think we can't drop this baby while we got it going here, and so we will keep working on that. And that also means to help build major fundraising, as well as contributions from the public at large.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Well, this just was the most exciting presentation I've heard in a long time. It was just so coherent. There's probably nothing I know less about than arts administration, or coming up with things like you've come up with, but some of it is such common sense, and I know for a fact that a performing arts theater on Howard Street will make, make everything change. I know that for a fact. But I also know, when you talk about the next step, something I read recently in reading about all of this is, and I, some very famous person said this, I have no idea who it was, that a vision without action is just a dream. So, second step, we've got to take the second step, because that's the beginning of the action step. And I agree with you about coordinating an arts person and an economic development person, because when we were working on the Howard Street Theater, people from every department were, you know, what should I do? How should I, you know, who's going to do this next? Who's going to contact the architect? Who's, and it was just crazy. So, while we did a wonderful job in pulling it all together, it would have been amazing if we had had the person you're talking about. And I know this is just a little, little, like a speck in the ocean compared to all that you're talking about, but I can see how that would make such a huge difference.
Yeah, I think what we, what we believe and what we hope is that a senior person in the cabinet who has the capacity to help shape policy, work with the other departments in identifying what is the sort of scope of the arts activity now and possibly into the future, that that coordination internally is really a major step. And as we're getting started, people look to the city. They wanted to see the city as the convener of this group to continue the action forward with the committee, to really identify the elements of the plan, who needs to be a part of the planning process, helping to find the money, et cetera. So, I think it starts with that. That's my humble opinion.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you very much. I think the most exciting thing about this, to me, is the energy that you're bringing to it, and your organization and your vision is all so Evanston. It's just wonderful that you're doing this.
We let her in.
It's just, it really is wonderful. And what I'm thinking is that this has to be someone in the city manager's office, it really has to be that high-of-a-level of person that can sort of see, you know, see across departmental lines. We've certainly done that in other areas, and I think this is, this is a priority, definitely, I think, for the whole community. I'm just so thankful to all of you, you know, who participated, and all of you from the various organizations who are willing to come together to discuss this. It's so important for all of us. We're so used to sitting up here and just looking at money and worrying about, about that, and sometimes we forget about the heart and soul issues that really make Evanston a unique and special place that it is, and that's just not in the last few years. That's as long as I can remember, this has been a definitive, you know, issue for Evanston, and you've brought it to us and brought it in a way that's organized and told us what we can do to help, and I'm more than happy to do that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to thank the foundation for doing this report. In fact, it's very exciting. The last time I was involved in a, you know, study like this was with, when, the end result was a lot of attention and focus was putting on childcare in this community, and we knew where that went. That went great, had great possibilities and great results. So I'm really excited that the foundation's behind this, because I know just how the foundation can really promote and push and push something. A couple of questions I do have is, you know, the most intriguing thing, or one of the most intriguing things, is you mentioned the amount of money contributed to the economy, and I think that's a message we really need to get out there. I think it also would, you know, how do we get that message out? And in the process, I think there's great opportunities to include the business community, especially restaurants that tend on with theater and hotels and things that may, you know, benefit the result of shows and different things. So, you know, I think that's really a great, you know, there are a lot more partners, a lot more possibilities than we even can imagine.
We noticed at several of the meetings, not only were there a lot of business people who participated, but also, there were a couple of meetings where there were people who sort of raised their hand and said, "Oh, by the way, I'm a marketing person and I'll help," so it was great. We want more of those.
Alderman Holmes.
Well, I had the opportunity to sit in on a listening session, and the same enthusiasm that night was here tonight, so congratulations on the presentation. I hope my question won't be misunderstood, but was there ever any conversation about the role of someone other than the city taking this lead role in terms of looking at that?
Yes, there was.
Oh, okay. Will that be in the report?
In the report, and I just want to call the attention to the three priorities. First one is what we need the city to do. The second one is really what the combined citizens need to do. The arts organizations, the business community, coming together and understanding that this, this will not move forward unless there is sustained involvement, activity, initiatives that come out of the public, the private sector. Every, every one of the examples that we looked at, there was independent advocacy of the citizens in a combined collective fashion that moved these issues forward, that helped to identify solutions in partnership with the city. So I just want to be really clear, this is not now lobbing the ball to the city and saying, "Now you all have to do it." It really requires the continued meetings of Evan Starts in an expanded fashion to include more voices at the table, to get really business leaders, other, other sectors of the city, the senior community, the childcare community, education, everybody's got to be a part of that planning process. And I believe that out of that, it will be very clear what kind of leader needs to be working in partnership with the person that's in the city office.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen.
Yes, thank you very much. I want, I echo what everyone else said, has already said. My, I have just a quick point to make. After this, the process was ongoing about, probably about a month ago, my minister brought up the issue that there hadn't been any participation from some of our, her understanding was there hadn't been as much looking at the various churches that we have as venue possibilities. Now, I don't know whether that was true or not, but she and I met with someone from an organization called Sacred Places and the Arts, that you may be familiar with. And I think that that would be a very good organization to pull in, to bring to the table on venues and the ability to have spaces that are somewhat underused these days, and coordinate them with our arts community. days as, and coordinate them with our arts community. That's been done a lot in Philadelphia is my understanding from Sacred Places and, and the arts, and the arts, and also beginning to be done in Chicago.
That's correct.
And, you know, that's something else, and the city manager and I have talked about developing an inventory of these types of places that we have here in Evanston and, and also the instruments that we have here in Evanston in our churches, you know, the very large, permanently stationary ones that we have, the permanent ones that we have, and some of which have their own endowments. And so, you know, that's something that may not be well-known in the community, and these are spaces that once were filled and now are not so filled, but there are also ancillary spaces that go along with them that aren't as well-used anymore. So that's something that, you know, I've, I know that Johanna was away for a period of time, so on vacation, but she's already got an email from me about this, but I'm not going to put her on the spot right now. But I'd like to put you in touch with those people. I told them I would facilitate.
Absolutely. And I just do want to say that I did meet with the pastors council and, and talked really more broadly about the Evanstarts initiative and hearing from the young people that are in their parishes and also hearing from, from their congregants. And the idea of their use, using their spaces is absolutely part of the creative use of space. You're absolutely right. It's something that's moving forward very quickly in Chicago, and I think there's a wonderful opportunity for that to be considered in Evanston.
And we have that example already here with the Music Institute taking over the Christian Science Church on Chicago Avenue, which is an absolutely incredible auditorium.
They hosted us for a number of meetings.
They noticed, yes, yes.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To follow up Alderman Holmes's comment about the city's role in taking the lead on this, and I think it feels to me as if the city is kind of one of the biggest players in the arts in Evanston, but mostly by default. And where the city may take the lead at this point and taking that next step, it doesn't necessarily mean that the city's going to hang on to the reins for the duration. This is something that will evolve as we build this arts ecosystem, and it won't always be the city driving the bus, so to speak. It's, would be, I think, a wise investment at this point in time for the city to help us take that next step. So is Evanstarts a, a brand now? Can we build a brand around that or trademark the word so that we can?
I think it'd be great to do so.
I think it'd be great, too.
And I just want to point out that the name was created by the youngest member of the committee. She is not here tonight, but I just want to put Amanda Carlson's name in the record because it was Amanda who named this project.
Very nice and just right. Just right.
We can work with that.
All right. I think you've answered all the questions, Ms. Dickerson. Anytime you want to say you're from Evanston, that would be okay with the mayor of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's my intention to come back to you probably in May with a, with a list of issues regarding the arts to talk about, as I think was mentioned this evening. There are several before you, and I think that spending some time with the council in May or early June would be a good, good time. So that will be the next step as far as the city's concerned, to bring this back to the council in, in May or June.
Do you want us to accept the report?
I think that'd be dandy.
Would someone like Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor and members of the arts community and the city council, I move we accept the report.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to accept the Evanstarts report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. What?
Take about three minutes.
Take about three minutes, maybe four.
So that people can read.
They want to hear the consent agenda? Alderman Rainey, could we please have the consent agenda?
This will clear the room. Thank you, Madam Mayor. If anybody cares, I gotta read this. First item on the consent agenda is from the Administration and Public Works Committee. We recommend the council adopt ordinance 29013, which amends subsection 346B of the city code to increase the number of authorized Class B liquor licenses to 18 and permit issuance of a liquor license to FERCUS doing business as La Machina Cafe at 1620 Orington. Next item for your approval is adoption of ordinance 30013, which amends subsection 346C of the city code to increase the number of Class C licenses to 30 and thereby permit issuance to Coast Central Corporation doing business as Coast Sushi Central at 2545 Prairie. Next item is authorizing a lease for city-owned property at 623 27 and 1/2 Howard Street to Pekish LLC. This ordinance was introduced February 25. Next, economic development is, I don't know, out of order, but I'm going to read it anyway. Economic development, I'm going to take this off the consent agenda, correct? Yes, right. Next, under planning and development, the committee met and recommends adoption of ordinance 26013, granting a special use permit with conditions to mitigate the possible noise impact for a commercial indoor recreation facility at 739 Main Street, a vacant storefront for a boxing studio. Next item is men, is ordinance 33013. The committee met and recommends that you adopt ordinance 33013, amending special use ordinance 120012, adopted November 12, 2012, for tennis scoreboards at 2250 Sheridan Road to permit an increase in size to the N signs located on the large scoreboard. The new proposal should not increase the view of the scoreboard from Sheridan Road. Madam Mayor, next item is P3 and then P4, I'm going to remove this from the consent agenda and would ask the committee chair to allow me to move to table both these two items to our next meeting, our next regular city council.
P3 and P4?
P3 and 4?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think more information needs to be provided and a little work needs to be done. All right, next, where do we have next? Under Human Services, the special events calendar is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by Human Service Chair. Then we have ordinance 28013. The Human Services Committee and staff recommend council adoption of this ordinance, which amends the city code of 2012 as amended, assigning a four-year term of service for Americans with Disability Act Advisory Board members and permitting the mayor to reappoint members for a second term. Next, the Housing and Community Development Act Committee, along with its fabulous head, Sarah Flax, recommend that you approve the 2012 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, the CAPR, commonly known as the CAPR. It must be submitted to the Chicago Field Office of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development by March 31, 2013. Madam Mayor, you've recommended no appointments, and therefore I move the consent agenda.
Second? It's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. City manager, did you want to comment?
Yes, a question for Ald. A question for Alderman Rainey. The, the two items from Planning and Development, the next council regular meeting unfortunately is not till the 22nd of April.
That's okay.
So you would have to come back on the 22nd of April.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that being the only question, it has been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
I'm sorry.
The consent agenda?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to zero, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Grover, could we have Administration and Public Works?
I have no report, Madam Mayor.
All right, there's nothing. And, all right, Alderman Fisk, Planning and Development.
Are we doing economic development after planning and development? Do you want to do it that way?
Yeah, you can do it in any order.
Okay, could we just do economic development first then? Okay. O1 is Resolution 1R13, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a TIF construction grant agreement with Pekish One LLC for 623 to 627 and 1/2 Howard Street. Is there, the committee recommends approval, is there a motion?
I don't have a motion yet.
You moved it.
Okay, I, oops.
Alderman Fisk?
I move approval.
And Alderman Rainey, second, it's been seconded. It's been moved and seconded. Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Wilson?
Just very briefly, while I'm not supporting the allocation of the funds, I just wanted to make it clear that these seem to be great people, great business, great enterprise, and hope it nothing but the best of success. It's just a question of the amount of the allocation of the funding for me.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? All right, it's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution 1R13, authorizing the city manager to negotiate a TIF construction grant agreement with Pekish One LLC for 623 to 627 and 1/2 Howard Street. City clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
No.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Alderman Tendem?
Aye.
Seven to one.
Seven to one, the motion passes. Alderman Fisk, could we have Planning and Development?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Item P3 is ordinance 2013, amending the text of the zoning ordinance by enacting a new section 61517, OHR, the overlay district for Howard Ridge. City staff recommends consideration that amends the zoning ordinance text to create a new overlay zoning district, which will require certain types of new retail uses such as hair salons, nail salons, beauty shops, and barber shops to operate only by special use in the Howard Ridge TIF. The Plan Commission does not recommend approval. This ordinance was introduced on February 25th and was held at the March 11th city council meeting. I move approval.
Is there a second?
Second, but I'm gonna.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Rainey?
Yes. Madam Mayor, because this was held, I don't believe it can be held again, so I'd like to move to table this item to our next regular meeting.
It's been moved and seconded. All right, do we need a roll call?
Need to vote on.
It's to table it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, item P4 is ordinance 3013, amending the zoning map to place certain properties within the Howard Ridge overlay district. City staff recommends consideration that amends the zoning map by placing properties in the Howard Ridge TIF district into the new overlay zoning district, which will require certain types of new, new retail uses such as hair salons, nail salons, beauty shops, and barber shops to operate only by special use in the Howard Ridge district. Plan Commission does not recommend approval. Ordinance was introduced at February 25th, 2013. City council meeting was held at the March 11th meeting. I move approval.
Second. Been moved and seconded. Alderman Rainey?
Madam Mayor, just a brief explanation here. There, there are so many unfortunate rumors circulating about this that I want to do a little more work. I guess I have not done a very good job explaining this, and so I'm going to move also to table this, this item also.
Second.
Till the next meeting.
It's been moved and seconded to table this. Seeing no lights on for discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, it's tabled. Alderman Braithwaite, could we have Human Services?
Your Human Services.
You're on, Peter.
Thank you. I'm looking for an approval for the 2013 Special Events Calendar. Human Services Committee and staff recommend city council approval of the 2013 calendar of special events contingent upon compliance with all requirements as set forth by the special event policy and guidelines.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Mayor, I would, I'd like to do, see if I can do one or two things here with this. First, I'd like to make a correction that in the memo that we have, it states that, and this is important for everyone who's watching, it states that on page 257, that the annual events and the non, non-Lakefront Park events are not changing and that, that there is one returning event and one new event. The annual, the policy that we have in place is that there will be 12 special events in the, on the lakefront. And I'd like to explain to people that there is one event that is not returning, and we have one event here that it is also coming back. So last year, the number was exceeded, but this year, the number will not be exceeded. So then there is another new event that's being suggested that be added here. It's sponsored by, are you two listening? Jet Events, Halloween Hustle, 6K Run Walk. I am not satisfied that we have enough information about this organization. My understanding is that it's a for-profit company, and I have serious concerns about having this along the lakefront. No, we need more information about this, this company, this LLC. So in order to find this out, I would either propose holding this list tonight until we get more information, or I, I would be fine with accepting all of the organizations with the exception of Jet Events LLC.
Second?
Yeah.
All right. Alderman Fisk?
We represent, do I ask this question? Opportunity is up to you.
Right.
Wait, I still have the floor.
Okay. Sorry. Right. Right. I have a number of questions about your organization, but right now I would like to approve the other events, but not the Halloween event. I have some concerns about the organization and the fact that we have never had a commercial operation run an event except for a not-for-profit before on the lakefront. So it's, I believe it's been moved and seconded to approve everything except this event.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I do hear a second.
Second.
It has now been moved and seconded to approve everything except the Halloween event. Alderman? Okay, you want to do that now?
No, I mean, people might have comments.
Does anyone have comments on any of the other events? All right. Alderman Rainey?
No, no, not on the other events. I just want to clarify, we're not saying no to the jet event. We're saying we need more information, right? That's, we're just sort of holding that.
Do you want to refer to that back to?
No, I've asked, I've already asked.
I've already asked the Director of Parks and Recreation for a lot more information about Jet, and I want to find out more about how they operate, where the money goes, and if you're an Evanston organization, where the funds go, all of those things. Because every other organization that we have is an Evanston not-for-profit, and the money is all directed back to those, those groups.
Do you want to answer that?
No, not here, not now. Okay. I, I would like more information on paper.
All right. Alderman Fisk, did you have anything to say about all the other groups?
No, I don't. But I have something to say about what Alderman Wynn said.
Okay.
Do you want me to wait or go ahead?
Why don't we go ahead and vote on the motion in front of us?
Okay.
If you want to speak to that. Alderman Wilson?
I would strongly prefer that we ask, the individuals are here. I don't want to just piecemeal approve them. The programming and the planning is a cohesive plan for the, for the year, and I don't see why we can't just go ahead and, and address whatever questions we might, at least attempt to address the questions, to see if we can plan and approve the whole thing. I don't want to do it piecemeal. I'd like to see if we can. I'd like to see if we can attempt to just get it done tonight and not send people back off if they can answer the questions. If they can't answer the questions, then so be it, but at least give them an opportunity. They've taken the trouble to be here, and I think it's appropriate to go ahead and see what they have to say.
I got a lot of lights on. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Perhaps Mr. Dornaker, if we don't want to hear from the event organizers, perhaps Mr. Dornaker could share the background about what types of folks sponsor events, whether these are the same people who do our Turkey Trot, the Thanksgiving Run, which I understood they were involved, maybe not. That would be helpful as well. So we may already have this group as a presence on the lakefront, and I would be more than welcome to have the conversation tonight, put us that much farther ahead if we're all here.
Alderman?
And then there's an issue with the timing, too, given that our next meeting is April 22nd, and if you're planning an event, even a first-time event that doesn't happen till October, this being our only lakefront event in October, lead time is really key to planning things like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem.
I just wanted to agree that I believe while they're here, it's 8:30, it's not that late. Let's hear from them.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do believe this is a new direction for events on the lakefront. I talked with Mr. Gainer today and had asked him for more information, which I'm expecting that he will provide. I did know that the applicants were going to be here this evening, but I also understood that the information that he was going to make available might exceed what the applicants were able to present to us tonight. I would very, very strongly encourage us to put this off and not be voting on this tonight. I do think this is an entirely new direction for us to go on the lakefront. It basically allows a commercial organizer to come in to our lakefront events, and I strongly believe that it requires some more information and some more discussion on the part of the City Council.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn.
Madam Mayor, I'd be happy ... May I ask you a few questions? I'll ask a few questions. But I would, before I preface all this, I would like to say, we have a lakefront policy that was established 10 years ago, that we have 12 events on the lakefront. Last year, it was exceeded, and I apologize that I didn't know that, I didn't realize we had exceeded it. We have 12 events here right now that have, except for this one, that are returning. And if we approved this Halloween Hustle, that is in excess of the number of events that we have had this policy on since I don't know when, since I've been on the council. So I'd like more information about this group, I ... But I understand, and I'm happy to get it, and I understand that you're very involved in Evanston, but fundamentally, this is the 13th event, and we have a policy that we went through very thorough examination of years ago, and it's been in place, Alderman Holmes, for 10 years.
No, I'm not ... And Alderman Wynn, I put my light on to ask the question, but we had a discussion, I believe. Didn't we discuss this in Human Services, too, in terms of, and I had to go over to say to Alderman Grover, I thought we had this discussion in terms of looking and expanding the number of events on the lakefront. Now, if we didn't complete it, that's fine, but I remember we did have a discussion about that.
Right. And I believe that it was not completed, and that I was not informed of the ... That this plan was underway. I was very involved with the policy establishment years ago, and there were neighborhood groups in my ward who did not know that this policy expansion was taking place, and they were very concerned about that. So that's ... There are two issues here. One is, is the policy still in place, and I believe it is, and so at this point, we have 12 events that are returning. And then, number two, the second event is Jet LLC, and I'm happy to ask you a question, which is, are you a 501(c)(3)?
No.
Wait, I have to come to the mic. Can you tell us your name?
Sure. I'm Elliot Weinberg, and this is my business partner, Jeremy. We're both longtime Evanston residents, and we're not 501(c)(3). No.
So you're a for-profit business?
It's a for-profit. We're a publishing company, and then we've developed an event business. We've got four other events, one up in Kenosha, 4,000 runners for the Wisconsin Marathon. And being longtime Evanston residents, we launched the Turkey Run because we wanted to see a great event, family event. But, you know, if you feel we should pull, getting back to your number, the application, we can do that.
Can you tell us how much money you made on the Turkey Trot?
We didn't ... We were a not-for-profit on that end.
In theory, we're a for-profit organization.
These events aren't as simple, and I know James the Runner is starting a start line. There's a lot that goes into it. I mean, it was a well over $60,000 budget, of which we brought in over $50,000 in revenues. That's not a perfect budget to go forward with, but ... So we were not-for-profit on that end, but we're vested into it. These events take multiple years to cultivate. We're very lucky with the Turkey Trot, and the Halloween Hustle is another event. Again, it doesn't have to be on the lakefront. That could be somewhere else. The beauty of the lakefront outside of the construction at Northwestern is the lakefront path and the limit of Closing Streets, as you know. So, no, we're not not-for-profit, but neither is the Bank of America, and they produce the Chicago Marathon, and that's the biggest fundraiser.
Right. No, I know that. But that's Chicago.
That's Chicago, and Evanston's different, but most events have a producer.
I recognize that most events have a producer, but if it's sponsored by, for instance, the AIDS Ride, right?
So to address that point, exactly. We were going to mirror this event similar to the Turkey Run in that we were going to bring in, well, Turkey Run, Foundation 65, Evanston YWCA, and this year, it's going to be the YMCA as well, and the Food Pantry raised over $4,000 for those groups last year. It's a percentage of the entry fees that come in, and even though on our end, our energy, we weren't paid for that, but we feel that's a good program, and it was a great family event. It's ...
No, I heard excellent things about it, but I think that I'll have to say that I didn't understand who had sponsored that, and I didn't understand completely how this operation worked. So that when I saw your name again coming up, and you were actually the 13th event on the lakefront, I called the Director of Parks and Recreation and said, who is Jet LLC? I mean, all of these other events, I was involved with the Nichols Walkathon for five years, which is Nichols PTA, as Jeremy knows, that does, runs that whole event, gets the permit, everything. So that's my concern, is that we have a for-profit business putting on events on the lakefront, and I'm assuming that your goal isn't ... You're not simply a pass-through organization, that your goal is, you're not paid a fee to organize this, but you're actually, you're ... The money, the amount that you bring in is dependent upon the number of participants, correct?
The amount of money we bring in is dependent upon, well, sponsorship and participants and putting on a good event. I mean, ultimate goal is actually to open a running store in Evanston, so not to preclude anything, but ...
Well, no, that would be wonderful if you wanted to do that.
But that's something separate, but we felt this was a great way to start to see, and we know it exists in Evanston. There's a lack of running events, and, you know, I don't know how many for-profits or not-for-profits are out there producing events. Typically, they will be attached to an event. That's how running events typically work.
Right.
There's a backbone to it, and that's a for-profit company that produces it. That happens to be what we do. We happen to live in Evanston, so we wanted this here. I don't think most people would come and invest two years for an event, typically not make money off of it.
And I'm not doubting that you make money. My concern is that the event be sponsored, we've, all of these events, and as I said, this is a learning process for me, that these, that, for instance, the AIDS Ride, I'm sure, and I'm citing that simply because it's the biggest one I can think of, and my next-door neighbor rides in it, is, has an organizer who organizes the whole event, and they're paid a fee for that, a set fee. And then, the vast majority of the money that's generated, there's some administrative costs, goes to ... For AIDS research.
Well, I was gonna, actually, the marathon's a good example of how typical running events work. On a grand scale, there's 45,000 runners. The Bank of America does not give any money to a charity, but they have 150 charities under their umbrella, and they cultivate training programs and the event itself, and these groups themselves raise over $10 million. And the bank helps cultivate that, and that was our goal with Evanston with the Turkey Trot, and hopefully with another event, and it doesn't have to be on the lakefront, for example, but to bring more events into the city of Evanston is to bring in local organizations, and that's all we've worked on, is local organizations, so.
And you're right. You're right. The lakefront is the easy place, because I met with the Evanston Runners Group, and they wanted to have a half marathon, and the map was ...
There's no place to go.
Right. Yeah. And so ...
That's a perfect model for running events, and, I mean, I'm not sure what the model was when the criterion came to Evanston, if the city was involved, or, but, you know, we're happy to pay fees for all of our services and also cultivate growing the contributions that we make. So as our event grows, the people who receive money will grow, too. So it's a business, but it's also ...
Our goal was really to bring a great community event to Evanston, and it wasn't previously here, and there's obviously a demand for it, so, you know, that's what we wanted to do.
No, and I don't question what your overall goal, you know, full disclosure, I was, I know Jeremy, I was his daughter's Girl Scout leader for five years. He lives on my street now, but I didn't know you were part of this, though. I would have just called you up today. But my, but, you know, it was my, I want to understand to what extent this is a commercial operation on our lakefront.
You know, in answer to your previous question, you're right, if a nonprofit organization coordinated it, they were the coordinators, and they hired us to do the job, the event would be out of business because we would charge a fee. At the moment, we're doing it for free, so we're producing a community event at no charge, effectively. So, you know, not to say that we're charitable organization, we're just doing this for the wonders of the community, but we do want to give something to the community. We want to provide an event that will be successful, and hopefully, at some point, you know, we'll benefit from that as well. But I really think that there's a need for ... I ran a rotary 5K a couple of times in Evanston in the summer a few years ago, and it's out of business now. I think they had 200 participants at the time, and I can only assume it's because they were losing money. It's no good doing that if you're not going to raise any money.
No, and I think you should raise money. Like, the Birdsong Race is now, you know, on so many people's regular calendars every single year. So clearly, I think the Turkey Trot has the potential to do that as well. I want to just understand better the model you're talking about, because it's one that we haven't had before, and understand how that fits in with our lakefront use policy or any of our venues policy, James Park, Lovelace, or any of the Streets policy that we have, or our parks policy. That's why I want to hold off on the Halloween. I mean, you're doing the Turkey Trot, I want to know more information about that. I heard it was a great success. I wasn't in town. That's my goal here tonight, because I need to understand this better. I didn't understand who was running the Halloween race, or, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were running the Turkey Trot.
No, not at all. These are very fair questions, and I'm sorry if we hadn't made that clear in the past. I know a couple of people, Don has been to the event, so I know a couple of you have been there, but we'd love you all to come out to the event and see the event for yourself. It's a really great family, community event, and we thought we were doing a service for the community.
You were. You absolutely were, and I think that I don't question that you were. I just, I need to know better for my constituents, you're one, about who, how this works with the model that we've had, because it's different than what we've had before. You know, it's not a PTA running this, it's not the Evanston Ecology Center doing a duck pluck in the lagoon. It's, that's what I need to ...
Now, I take your point. There's a lot, as Elliot was alluding to before, there's a lot that goes into producing a really professionally organized running event, and there are a lot of nonprofit organizations who don't make it because of that.
Sure. I mean, yeah, you can easily imagine disaster. So I think if we could move forward, and Jeremy, I'm happy to meet with you after spring break, perhaps, and Elliot as well, and get more information, that's, that would be my goal. And thank you, Don, for urging me to ask the questions now.
Thank you.
I just have a quick follow-up. Well, I want to say something, because I'm sharing the meeting. Why not?[1505.28][1505.28](Laughter). Thank you. I love my Turkey Trot sweatshirt, but I do want to say that as Seventh Ward Alderman, I did go to meetings of people on the lakefront, and we, they came to Human Services, and we had discussions of the number of events on the lakefront, and whether you agree with the number 12 or don't agree with it, it is our public policy. And so it seems to me that we should, in fairness to the people who came to the meetings and gave their opinions and relied upon our vote, that it would be reasonable for us to invite the people who live on the lakefront and let them know if we are indeed considering changing our own policy, because that directly impacts them. So whether you're for 12 or not for 12, I would ask people to consider transparency and letting the folk know if we're going to change it, that we're thinking of changing it, and letting them at least have an opportunity to talk with us about whatever reasons they have for thinking that 12 is the right number. So that's all I have to say. Alderman Holmes?
Well, I basically said it, that we did have the discussion at Human Services, and not this year. I mean, this was last year. It wasn't even this year. It was last year that we talked about increasing the number of events, and I just, it just occurred to me that I didn't remember where it went. I don't know if it even made it to council. I don't remember. But we did have that discussion, and so I'm not sure where that is, so we'll have to reference it and make sure that we complete that conversation in terms of being able to open it up. The policies were made 10 years ago. Lots of things have changed since then.
I'm not advocating for one number or another, just for letting folk know.
And I don't have a number in mind. It was just that it was a conversation that had happened at a Human Services Committee, and I happened to remember it.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is just a quick question to the group. I Googled Halloween Hustle, and I see here last year in Palatine, the month of October, there was a 5K run, and it looks like the money raised went to benefit Fathers Helping Fathers. And so I'm just curious to know if this is something ...
That's not related to us.
That's, you're doing something totally different.
I mean, you gotta understand, Evanston, I mean, Thanksgiving Day and Halloween Day are one of the most popular days for running events, so the name could be, get it all over.
Okay, gotcha. So you're ...
We're not, no, we've never produced a Halloween run.
Okay. And then my follow-up question, is there a group that you've designated specifically for this event?
Well, there's one, I believe it's in the application, is it Diabetes? Because they'd called us last summer asking to be involved with something, and we haven't pitched anyone yet because we need approval for the event. It's foolish to go talking to people, but we'd like to, again, bring in the same crew of Evanston groups that we've worked with, whether it's Foundation 65, YWCA, YMCA, and other groups as well. We'd like to continue expanding that umbrella, but keep it in Evanston. That's our goal.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to pick up on Alderman Holmes's point of the discussion last year at Human Services, and I can fill in what's occurred in the course of the year. During the course of the year, Alderman Wynn and I and Director Gainer had several conversations about this issue, and were looking to see if there was a scenario for changes or expansion or contraction, and there were several discussions held, really over the full course of the year. I know the Southeast Evanston Association has been involved, and they have been concerned as well. We got to the point, as the 2013's calendar of events was coming forward, where the understanding that I believe was communicated to Alderman Wynn was that the number of events that had to Alderman Wynn was that the number of events that had come together for 2013 was at the number in the policy. And that information was conveyed on several occasions in early 2013 to the Southeast Evanston Association, and I believe was the impression that Alderman Wynn, and I think Alderman Fisk were both under, as this item then came to Human Services. It was on the Human Services agenda. There was concern expressed by the Southeast Evanston Association prior to the Human Services meeting that this number, that that information was incorrect. I believe there was continuing misunderstanding between staff and certainly Alderman Wynn about the number there. That was clarified this morning with review of the agenda packet over the weekend by Alderman Wynn. So without any question of merit to this race and to the events on the lakefront, I think it's important to point out that for several periods, several months in the beginning, since the beginning of 2013, the Lakefront Neighbors and the Lakefront Aldermen have been under the impression that it was going to be the same number. So I think, first of all, I've already apologized to Alderman Wynn, that today, as we've talked about, any misunderstanding, because I believe it was a misunderstanding. But had the information been known by the Ward Aldermen and the Neighbors that there was a 13th event, more clearly, I think these conversations could have already taken place, and we'd be here this evening having a different conversation. So I'd like the council to know that there has been that misunderstanding. And would be my recommendation to the council, that the motion be supported. The council has two special meetings between now and your next regular meeting. One is on Monday, April 1st, and on Tuesday, April 16th. If it's possible, Alderman Wynn, to have the discussions you feel are appropriate between now and April 1st, then we can make sure it's on that agenda. If that's not the case because of the spring break, then we can make sure that it's on for April 16th. But again, I want to make sure everyone is aware that I believe there has been a misunderstanding between staff and the Ward Aldermen and the Lakefront Neighbors on this. I think it can be easily rectified. Communication can be had, and my guess is that the council would likely consider a 13th event after those discussions. But I think it's important for the council to know that your staff bears some responsibility in what apparently was a misunderstanding with the Ward Aldermen and the Lakefront Neighbors.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
This is for action tonight, so there's no way to just hold voting on this one event?
Sure there is.
No, there is. We have, we have a motion, it's been moved and seconded, I believe, that we vote on all the other items.
Well, Ben, I want to thank these two gentlemen for offering us another event. This is exactly what we're talking about in our economic development ambitions, in placemaking in Evanston, in our community wellness efforts. And this is an event that, as I said, would happen in October, where we don't have any of these community fitness events in Evanston. So I think it would be well timed. And there's no better place, as we know, in Evanston to do a run than along our lakefront. All of Evanston is a flat course, but this one has the best view, and it's an uninterrupted stretch of run, as opposed to having to close streets and interrupt a course. So I really believe that we will get this one done, and we'll have a Halloween Hustle in 2013. I really hope we will, because again, this aligns so well with all of our goals for the city. And I'm hoping there'll be a reference to Human Services with regard to our lakefront event policy. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk, did you have anything more? All right. And Alder
What's the date?
Halloween.
Is it a date turn, or?
Oh, the date that we're going to discuss. I'm sorry, I thought you meant Halloween. It's April 16th.
And if that could be added to the motion, that would be appreciated.
Who made the motion?
Who made the motion?
Alderman Wynn made the motion.
Melissa, you need to add that to the
Can we add April 16th? All right. All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the special events calendar with 12 without the Halloween Hustle, which will be discussed on April 16th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you both for coming. And actually, you did very well, because you didn't have to stay till midnight. All right, that concludes Human Services. I believe we are at call of the wards. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to say that I had a good time and a great experience
Your mic, apparently, Jay.
A good time, great experience in Washington DC last week for the National League of Cities Conference with my two colleagues, Melissa Wynn and Alderman Burris. We learned a lot, and I hope we'll be able to produce a report to you. If not, we'll find ways to integrate and infiltrate everything that we do with what we learned in Washington DC last week. I want to make a reference to the Rules Committee regarding our assessment of neighborhood listservs, online groups as part of our citizen engagement efforts.
Excellent.
My, as we all know, a lot of our neighborhoods in Evanston have listservs or Yahoo groups or ways that we connect online. And I really want the city's citizen engagement undertaking to be plugged into those neighborhood groups, or at least so that we can get a feel for how many they are, how successful, what kind of information do they have out there, how can they help us in our outreach to citizens as well. So there's a way to connect all these great neighborhood online groups and online neighborhoods, and I want to be able to talk about this at Rules. And I'm, and we'll figure out a shorter way to describe this. But thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to congratulate my neighbor and Eighth Ward constituent Penny Rothizer for the award you gave her regarding the arts the other day at your State of the Union, State of the City. Was reflective of the State of the Union. I want to thank Jeannie Sankey for coming here tonight. She is, she's one of the pioneers over on Clyde, lives in a building that a judge wanted us to vacate several years ago. And so part of the whole community spirit of going to Howard Street and being able to do something other than wash your clothes, because you no longer can go to church there. I want to thank all of you, including, I want to single out Don Wilson, Alderman Wilson, for supporting the lease for Peckish. Also to point out to you that Peckish came to the Evanston, or the Howard Street Business Association meeting last week, because of course they're going to become a part of it now. And Brummel Park Neighbors were also invited to that meeting, where they told us that Peckish is not going to be the name of the restaurant, that it is a secret what the name of the restaurant's going to be, that that is just the name of the LLC that will operate the restaurant. So who knows what's going to happen. So thank you very much for supporting this. Having heard the arts report tonight, I know that we'll be moving more swiftly on the development of the Howard Street Theater, which is just, we just have to move on that. If you've listened to them, what they said is exactly what we've all been arguing back and forth to one another, that a performing arts space creates a very important economic development impetus for the rest of the street. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Oh, one more thing. I'm sorry, I forgot. Alderman Burris sent me a message saying that I should read it at the council meeting, that she, unlike Alderman Wilson, if she had been here, would have supported the $200,000, because she is confident that the return on investment will be much more than we even have predicted. Just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
It's good to hear from absent Alderman. There she is. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to make a reference, and I'm not quite sure to whom, for First Night Evanston to be considered a recipient, if there is any Evanston 150 grant money. I don't know whether you know that volunteers in the First and Third Wards and other wards throughout the city are getting together and are quite far along with their planning to reinstate Evanston First Night, so hopefully we will have that at the end of the year. And for those of you who didn't get your First Night Monopoly games, what, five years ago, there are still some in someone's basement somewhere. But I'm very excited about this, because it was a wonderful, wonderful event that really energized New Year's Eve in downtown Evanston. I'm thrilled that so many people have come together to discuss this and bring it back. And I'd like to do, at least make a gesture on the part of the city council to give them a little bit of financial support, because they're going to need it. So I don't know what committee, is that Economic Development? Is that, who is that, Wally?
I agree, it probably could go to a couple of different committees, probably Human Services.
It is. Okay, great.
And it would be, would be great if they put some request in writing.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Along with Alderman Burris and Alderman Grover, I also attended the National League of Cities meeting in Washington DC earlier this week, no, a week ago, sorry, and came back with a lot of very good information, attended a number of workshops. One of the most powerful workshops was on reducing gun violence in our cities. The panel was made up of Mayor Nutter, who's a mayor of Philadelphia, superb mayor there, and I'm going to forget the next two mayors' names, the mayor of Aurora, Colorado, and the mayor of Moscow, Idaho, which is a 24, a community of 24,000 on the Idaho-Washington state border. It is the home, I believe, of the State University, a place where their mayor was, she was stunningly eloquent about this. Everyone owns guns, everyone grows up hunting, but they had three horrific events of gun violence there in the last year. Like, and I don't remember exactly all of them, but one of them involved someone who became a sniper on a tower. And, you know, straight out of the University of Texas from years ago. So her point to all of us was, even in communities where there is a tradition of hunting, and there are guns, and people understand how they're used, this type of gun violence is happening in a small community. So there were a number of things that we discussed. We also had, toward the whole conference, a ferocious address by Joe Biden on gun violence. I mean, that's the only way to describe it. It was one of the most powerful speeches that I've heard from any politician on this issue. So I think Alderman Burris and Alderman Grover and I have come back with a number of things on a number of topics, but that in particular. The message that Vice President Biden gave us was that we are the folks who are right here on the ground, and that, that we should not lose momentum, that it's really critical, that that's what the NRA and the forces who are opposed to any type of controls are expecting, that the momentum will fade away. And his point was that it just can't do that. I want to change topics now. There was a Third Ward, we had a Third Ward Town Hall meeting last Thursday night, and I didn't count noses, but Wally did. And apparently, we established a new record. There were 150 people there. And in Lincoln School's new cafeteria, we all sat at cafeteria tables. But it was still a worthwhile meeting to everyone. And I really appreciate the turnout and the discussion that we had, and look forward to having the next one. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
I have no
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Just want to invite especially the Fifth Ward, but all Evanston residents to the Fifth Ward meeting this Thursday night, 7:00 PM at Fleetwood, where we will have all the candidates from both District 65 and 202, as well as the township supervisor candidates. So please come out. If you have questions, this will be the time to ask them. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Tandem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of references for Human Services. First is, I'd like to initiate discussions between city and ETHS about the possibility of creating artificial turf fields. These could really go a long way in helping alleviate some of our turf problems. They would not have to be shut down for a year at a time. They would not require a lot of maintenance once installed. I think that's a really good direction. We could go and bring good turf to a lot of different neighborhoods. Secondly, I would like to initiate, restore the discussion we had in Human Services about events, and number of events along the lakefront especially. And I'd like to get that started going again so that we can really have a clear direction for 2014.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes call of the wards. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Do you want to adjourn?
Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.